Trees from that front door because they couldn't handle it. I mean, we can't have trees in our front door. I'm saying that for your practice. I'm against trees, but I'm not. How much done is done? You can't change anything anymore.
How are you doing?
You just have to take that seriously.
Yeah.
Hi Jim.
Sir.
How are you doing?
Great, how about you?
Okay, good. Having a good day.
Me too. What about you? What have you been doing?
Oh, it's better than before.
Just as I remember it.
Okay, I knew you would. Yes, sir.
Hey, how are you doing? I'm here with you. I'm in the back though, because I had to run.
I understand you're four.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you for coming.
I got tripped and lying waiting.
Oh my.
Well, I was at the airport and I saw a singer. It's my mother. I didn't care for him. He was sitting by himself.
Thanks, I've been heading here.
That was cool. That's one of the things that you hope in the I G O L. I know. I'm sure it's a thing. White with a white. Yeah, how are you? Good. How are you? And over the corner. That's the high G O L study we're going to be addressing. This is true. I understand. This is a big problem, as I see it, is Interstate seventy-five. It's a major restriction. To eleven by six box covers at tree room. Eleven houses. Take all the. Go down three hundred yards to eight. There we go. But man, I don't know this. We give you one. Well, that's. Gateways. We just. Run off.
How are you doing? Thank you for being here. Where's he? Sign up. Hopefully, they do a good job on us.
I don't need to be. No, you don't. Let me get this. I just use this.
Can I cover you guys?
How could we do it?
You know, that should just be this most recent one? Is it look all right?
Thank you. Good. I just.
Oh, no, I can't either on my notes. It's some going.
What? It's mostly, mostly caused.
Do I say that?
Mostly it's.
It should track. You know.
That's what they do.
Chris wants to. Yeah. Yeah. You know that. How much money is it? I don't know. She got more organs, right? She had a little. A lot of people out there.
We're going to be two of us, that's why.
Over here. Thanks. Gentlemen.
Chris, yours. It's always been. I don't know. I don't know how you guys are.
It's not the highest. It looks like a business. Everything's across the board.
We were putting different things in to make everything.
They can just follow the instructions. They believe. But they put three homes in.
Make plans.
And it looks like a real business which the.
Well, it is.
Yeah. Well, I just want to say thanks for. Really going to look nice once they get those molten.
Wait to do. Okay, stay. Okay.
Looks good.
I'm glad you like it.
Thank you.
I figured that. I'll figure that.
Does Chris know that the P O A was administrated?
Uh, he should, yeah.
Some of the stuff he. Still exists.
Yeah, well, I mean, he mentions cases where they're.
Because you can't threaten and sue somebody that doesn't exist being held. That's, that's what he's saying here is just go after them and give them all the threats that they're not maintaining it. Well, they dissolved the damn thing, so there's nobody there to maintain it. This is what we have been trying to pursue, which is what I think is the answer. We sent a certified letter to the two officers of Worthington Members Office Park. I've located them, they're in Jacksonville. Put them on notice in that letter, indicate, hey, all's we're asking you guys to do is sign it fricking quickly indeed. It's that simple. And you're off the hook.
Right.
But I don't think that we can threaten them because the entity.
Yeah, I know whether they still have.
That's going to come up in the meeting. So that's what I'm going to ask today in the meeting.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sue their ass off.
What's the American way?
Litigation's what it's all about, right? There's more, there's more lawyers than law policemen in the country.
Yeah.
What's the matter?
Part of the problem.
That's for sure.
We get a humdinger going on in our community that's close to us. Cracked, we bankrupted our budget. It's dragged on for so long. Well, somebody that just, you know, decided they didn't want to pay their assessments, they came up with some talking little story and then they counters you.
We had a resident that did that. We.
Well, that's what we tried to do.
And then the bank finally. They counters you for forty-four thousand hours.
And they were fortunate enough, unfortunate for us to find some ambulance chase that took it off the assignment, so it's not close to them again, so.
It cost you and not them.
Right.
These guys that we told them to notice three thousand dollars, they quit paying their mortgage ten years ago. And the mortgage companies dumped their. Because they don't want to stay on top of it.
Yeah.
They find it. We had to talk. We had almost beg them. We've got another house. Since turnover, same thing, and our new boy doesn't really do it. Just let him. If you can't. You can't. Then guess what? Why should I pay? Acting quickly like you did in the first case is the only way to solve. Anything else turns out to be.
Ladies and gentlemen, it is Thursday, December twenty-eighteenth. Time for the meeting of Gateway Services C D D meeting. Please stand to join us for a pledge to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. If you have a noise-making machine like this, please put it on silent running. Our chairman is temporarily absent, and so I will be in the chair until she shows up. We'll start with the attendance with our attorney, Anthony Perez, Supervisor Tinkle, Supervisor Banks, I am Supervisor Guy, Supervisor Flaherty, our acting history manager, Mike Frath, and our engineer down there, Tyler Wainwright. Hello. Mr. Manager, do we have anyone in the wish to speak to the board this afternoon?
We do. We have Paul Mazurkowitz with the roadways under defunct POAs.
Great job of a name. Thank you.
Was it it?
Would you state your name again at the microphone for the record, please, and your address?
My name's Paul Mazurkowitz, and I reside at one-two-one-zero-five Country Day Circle in the Daniels Preserve Community. And as I said, I am Paul Mazurkowitz, and I'm the president of the Daniels Preserve H O A. And I wanted to address the agenda item dealing with the roadways under control of defunct POAs. Now, this topic is of particular concern to the property of this Daniels Preserve because it encompasses the section of Commerce Lakes Drive and adjoining area that is located directly across from our community, starting at the Love Child Building and continuing in Daniels Parkway. This section of property has become a virtual no-man's land with no responsible ownership entity since the Worthington Commerce Park Association, which is W C A, became defunct several years ago. I believe it's about seven years ago. The deniment of the property and the failure of the Gateway C D D to take the necessary steps during that seven-year time period to acquire the roads from W C A in order to maintain them has led to a situation where the Daniels Park H O A members have had to assume the expense of cutting the lawn along that expansive road to prevent it from becoming an overgrown, unsightly expanse, which, if unmaintained, would give the appearance of a vacant, unkempt lot, which extends the entire, excuse me, unkempt lot which extends the entire quarter-mile length along the opposite side of the road leading to our community entrance. Needless to say, this sort of appearance would have a very adverse impact on property values within our community. I was frankly stunned a few months ago when our H O A was approached by the P O A of the industrial park next to our community. That's where the Fort Myers Brewery is located, with the request that we contribute towards their payment of the electric bill to keep the streetlights on along the same stretch of road. It's inconceivable to me that communities within Gateway have to pay independently to keep streetlights on a road used by the general public as a thoroughfare. I can assure the board that the residents of Daniels Preserves are absolutely furious at this neglect, as well as both the financial cost to them in terms of maintaining the property that is not their responsibility and the time that has passed without it being addressed. I hope the board will at long last take the necessary steps to resolve this issue.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Paul. Any questions for?
Only to the extent that I'm going to be making a motion regarding not only yours at Worthington Commerce Park, but also Town Lakes and Gateway Office Parks later on on this board taking action to authorize our attorney to file the necessary paperwork with the officers of these three defunct deals and get this process going. This is long overdue.
Yeah, certainly is. And for the record, I wanted to thank Supervisor Tinkle for the efforts that he has made in trying to get this resolved. It's, it's really, again, incomprehensible that this has gone on for seven years. And the, the streetlights was really the final straw, I think, for a lot of people in our community. The fact that if it wasn't for the payment by the P O, P O A next door to us, we wouldn't even have streetlights on. Why? Because you have to pay to keep streetlights on, as we all do.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
One other question. You indicated P O A. Is it, is it more a quasi-P O A and it's just a private business doing the work? Because I understand it, no legal entity exists out there.
We, our, our management company was approached by somebody from the industrial park.
Yeah, I, that's what I thought it was. I think it's a group of people who were in that P O A, within that territory of that P O A, and they're trying to carry it on somewhat themselves and.
Yeah, there's some organizational entity there that is paying to keep those streetlights on, and they approached us and said, listen, how about kicking in to help us?
Got you.
And Mike, I had talked to Chris last week, and he said that there was going to be an agenda item. On today's meeting agenda, looking to have Tony start to continue the proceedings and move forward. I don't know if I.
It's, yeah, it's on.
It is. Got, okay. So it is on the agenda today, and we'll.
Yeah. Very grateful. Thank you very much.
Paul, did you give a copy of that that you gave me to anybody else?
No.
All right, we have Bob Gepper with Pelican Preserve.
Good afternoon, Bob Gepper from Pelican Preserve. And here today on behalf of the Pelican Preserve, Pond's Work Group, I know that the district has under consideration or is currently engaged in cleaning your catch basins, your mitered end sections, and your headwalls. And what I passed in front of you is simply a pro forma of how we're doing the same thing in Pelican. And rather than you guys going and venting the wheel again, I'm just offering this to you as a format of how we did it. Because all the pertinent information is in there, you know, the neighborhood, you know, the street, where the sections are, all the drains. It tells you how big that section is, whether the sump is ten inches, twelve inches, twenty-four inches, or whatever. And then it gives you any further description when needed. And then the last part of it is the report of what our vendor happened to find, which is unique every day what they're doing. But we've struggled with this over the years, and that's why I just thought I'd probably at least let you know what we're doing, choose to use it or disregard it or whatever. But we thought it was a pretty good format.
Did you bid this, Bob?
Uh, we bid the, yeah, I'm not sure. Normally we do, but we did not do cleaning. We only bid inspection.
Okay, you inspected the pipes and the headwalls.
This, this in document is nothing more than an inspection. So we're going to inspect every single year. And now we take this and then we decide whether we want to clean it or not. And if we get to the cleaning portion, then that we have historically bid, so we would bid that again.
Have you to date done any pipe cleaning and/or headwalls and/or catch basins?
Not within this effort, but up until about eighteen months ago before Irma, we had done everything. We've already done everything. This is now.
So this is supplemental open end?
This is now our pro forma going forward.
We haven't got that.
No, no, I understand. I really do. All I'm saying is.
You've met three years.
Yeah, we've been at this for eight years. That's right. We have been at it for eight years. But we, rather than having you stumble through some of the effort, sweetened on this. And we think it's a pretty decent way to do it. We could not manage the bidding when we had to inspect and clean, quite honestly. I don't know how anybody could bid on it. We had bids, but every single time that we tried to hold the vendor accountable, either we had so much to clean, they walked away from it, or we got into a controversy about, you know, not understanding what we wanted versus what they were bidding. And to date, every contractor that we had up to that auspices, this is going back about five years, walked away, including Shenandoah, which was a national.
When you had done the cleaning earlier, what limited the scope of work as opposed to doing every single man-to-man inspection? Did you restrict it to say twenty percent or greater or fifty percent greater?
We did. That's exactly how we did it.
How did you determine that?
We did. It was by a seat of reference. We had a report that said how deep, how, you know, clogged it was or dirty or whatever. And the Pond's Work Group looked down and saw this comprehensive report, and we just arbitrarily picked a number, I think it was twenty-five percent. We said, we will address all the twenty-five percent immediately, and the other ones will leave alone and will compare when we subsequently check it. So that's how we had been plodding along. Now, last year, before, two thousand sixteen, before Irma day, we did a random inspection of one-third of our structures. And the result of that one-third random inspection was we hadn't had any degradation in five years.
Who performed that work?
I'd have to look. I don't know.
You, you had a vendor do it?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
TV cameras?
Yes, yes.
I'm sorry, what did you say? The TV cameras?
With TV cameras. I, I, I just don't remember who did it. Chris has got all the documents. And that was our intent all along, to periodically re-inspect to see if what we did way back when was still degrading or robust or the same. And we found, we were very happy to mine, most of it was very, very good. We did not focus at that time on catch bases. That's something you learned from Irma. Up until then, we were focused on the pipes, including catch basin, including the, the mitered end section and headwalls, but they weren't the focus. We have since learned that we're better spending our money, once we know the pipes are cleaned, we're better spending our money on those three specific things. And they're a lot easier to clean, a lot cheaper, they walk through pipes.
Well, you've got a lot of your community that, unlike older Gateway, which has the tree coverage, that are predominantly right down the streets to where Irma did a disaster and.
In old Pelican.
They ended up in our sewers where you guys don't have that.
Well, in old Pelican, we experienced exactly what you're saying. But the Cypress Grove community, well, we were.
Anything there?
First of all, they're brand new. And we just had inspections because we didn't accept it until we had videotapes. So you're right, that helped us a lot.
Are you finished? Other question?
Yeah, just, just one. I mean, I think that what the takeaway here is, you know, Mike sitting in for, for Chris today and even for Tyler that's here, Pelican's already finished with this. They've gone through the pain points, probably multiple occasions. So whatever we need to do to probably conclude Bob or the Pond's group as they're going through this process, if nothing else, there may be some lessons learned out there that we can uncover now as opposed to as we get deep into it. So probably just be a good best practice to pull the Pond's group in in some, you know, regular routine meetings or just some conversation to make sure we have a good idea of what we, what we're getting into.
And Ed and I have worked closely over these last couple of years, that we share information freely, and we have offered to do exactly what you're saying. Not on a formal basis, but we'd certainly, you know, be happy to sit in the meetings and contribute.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other question? About? I have one.
Yes, sir.
On page two of your report.
Yep.
There's a column near the center that says about a debris percentage.
Yes.
If you go down three or four spots, it says a hundred and twenty. Can you help me with that?
Have no idea. I just got this report today.
It was overflowing the manhole.
Yeah, I don't know. I, you know, it's an obvious question. One of them's a hundred and fifty. I don't know. I guess you got my attention. It's really, really dirty. So we ought to do something about it.
Thank you very much.
It's clogged.
Thank you.
Good job, Bob.
Okay, next we have Joe Schofield with Sidewalks and Prado.
Joe Schofield, I live in Corina in Pelican Preserve, and I've been working with, with Chris. And we have a sidewalk issue where the sidewalks were not put in. And the city went and told Lennar they had to put them in. We had a pre-bid or a pre-construction meeting, went through the scope of the work. The scope is growing on a, not a daily basis, but it was three houses, now it's four houses. It was moving some water meters. Now it's fire hydrants. Now we're into sewer systems. I've worked with the city and gotten the city code enforcement to come out and take a look. And things are progressing, but last night, the sewer movement was brought to my attention. Neighbors are very upset about that. So I wrote Chris a note, and I basically said, Lennar had to have permits to build this stuff to begin with. Inspections had to be done before these houses were sold. They're now moving all this infrastructure, which we are responsible for in Gateway. The C D D owns that infrastructure. And Lennar has just gone moving stuff, no inspections. And I'm urging the C D D to stay on top of Lennar and coordinate with the city inspections to ensure that permits are issued. There's a permit that's required for each construction of each house. And now that all this infrastructure is being moved, there should be new permits issued. It should be done in accordance with code, and you should make sure that that is done. I'm urging the staff here to stay in touch with Lennar and the city, to ensure that these residents are having their properties protected and that the construction is being done as it should be in conformance with the state laws and what you folks are going to have to pay to take care of in the future.
No, several questions.
Hold it, please.
Several questions. I'm a little confused. Is this in the city or in?
Gateway. It's in Pelican Preserve, which is.
Which is in the city.
It's in these. All of Pelican Preserve is, I understand it, in the city. But the Prado section is in Gateway Services for utilities.
Correct.
So it's, it's, these people are stuck between the rock and the hard spot. But this is all infrastructure that is owned by Gateway.
Correct.
And Lennar is moving this stuff. We've already had a leakage of water that had to be fixed, which Chris took care of. Now we've got additional work being done. They added another house that has a yield sign on it, which now I'm not sure if the Department of Transportation has to be involved to move traffic signs or not, but the project is growing, and I'm not sure who's controlling it.
Did the original plans, we're talking specifically the streets, the rights of way and utilities that are within Gateway section, which would be Prado, Bastoya, Matarita Four and/or.
Correct, Ed.
So it's in one of those?
Yes, it's in Prado, actually.
Prado. Do the plans show a sidewalk that was, on the plans, that was not built?
Correct. They do. The sidewalk was on the plans, it wasn't put in, so now they're going back and redoing it.
Tyler's shaking his head, and that creates a problem for me.
Tyler, maybe you can help me. I understood.
What does that mean?
Help me, help me, friend.
All right, so for the record, my name's Tyler Wainwright, I'm with Petra Tech. So here's what happened. The, the original, I'm at Preo here, and specifically, as you've probably been here, if you come up the construction entrance that first gate, that gets you to go into Preo, it's right there. So when Preo was originally designed, this would have been two thousand fifteen-ish, something like that, there's four or five houses along that strip of road right there that originally did not have a sidewalk on it.
It's far north end.
Yes, northwest corner.
Far north end, yeah.
So on the, when land development went through, there was not a sidewalk designed there. Land development finished, they closed down their site permanent with the city, they closed down the permanent with Gateway, everything was closed, they began to construct home. When Lennar went to go pull the building permits for the houses on those lots, someone at the city said, hey, there has to be a sidewalk in front of those houses. And Lennar said, no, they're done. Our land development's done. It wasn't on the site plan. And the city said, eh, we don't care, you gotta put a sidewalk there anyway. So Lennar fought with them for a while, and they lost. And the city said, you gotta build a sidewalk. Lennar said, okay, fine. So Lennar went to Gateway and got a different permit, because their permit with us was closed out, so they went and got a different permit to go construct that sidewalk. The reason they got that was because the sidewalk is your asset, and they also had to move a couple of utilities. From what I remember on those plans, they had to relocate, I think it was two hydrants. I don't know about the yield sign or the sewer cleanup. I don't know if that was on the plans or not, but the hydrants, definitely, they knew they had to move up front.
So how many feet of street or sidewalk? We're talking about four lots, five lots?
Four lots, so three hundred and twenty.
So that's, that's the, it's not any more than that? Just four lots?
Yeah. And they're moving it seven feet back from the, the curb, seven feet back into the, into folks' yard, into their yard.
Into the right of way.
Into the right of way, yeah. They've had to move trees, which, believe it or not, they agreed with, that the trees couldn't be replaced in the front yards and meet code. So they actually gave the homeowners the opportunity to move them in the backyard, which they did, which, again, there's codes that say where trees can be planted with the infrastructure in the ground, so they've done some nice things. Lennar came out and talked to the homeowners about the trees. The contractor yesterday told the homeowners about the movement of the inspection for the sewers. So there's been some interaction, which is great. And Chris has been very helpful in setting up that pre-construction meeting. But the fact is, there's codes that are applicable to all of this work. And all those codes, as this Tyler said, were closed out. Somehow, the drawings ended up with the sidewalk on it again. That's what we had for our.
So on the, when land development went through, there was not a sidewalk designed there. Land development finished, they closed down their site front of the city, they closed down the permit with Gateway, everything was closed, they began to construct home. When Lennar went to go pull the building permits for the houses on those lots, someone at the city said, "Hey, there has to be a sidewalk in front of those houses." And Lennar said, "No, they're done. Our land development's done. It wasn't on the site plan." And the city said, "Ah, we don't care, we gotta put a sidewalk there anyway." So Lennar fought with them for a while and they lost. And the city said, "Yeah, build a sidewalk." And Lennar said, "Okay, fine." So Lennar went to Gateway and got a different permit, because their permit with us was closed out, so they went and got a different permit to go construct that sidewalk. The reason they got that was because the sidewalk is your asset, and they also had to move a couple of utilities. From what I remember on those plans, they had to relocate, I think it was two hydrants. I don't know about the yield sign or the sewer cleanouts, I don't know if that was on the plans or not, but the hydrants definitely, they knew they had to move up front.
So, after how many feet of street or sidewalk? Were we talking about four lots, five lots?
It's four lots, so 320 feet.
So that's, that's the, it's not any more than that? Just four lots?
Yeah. And they're moving it seven feet back from the, the curb, seven feet back into the, into folks' yards, into their yards.
Into the right of way.
Into the right of way, yeah. They've had to move trees, which, believe it or not, they agreed with, that the trees couldn't be replaced in the front yards and meet code. So they actually gave the homeowners the opportunity to move them in the backyard, which they did. Which, again, there's codes that say where trees can be planted with the infrastructure in the ground, so they've done some nice things. Lennar came out and talked to the homeowners about the trees. The contractor yesterday told the homeowners about the movement of the inspection for the sewers. So there's been some interaction, which is great. And Chris has been very helpful in setting up that pre-construction meeting. But the fact is, there's codes that are applicable to all of this work. And all those codes, as, as Tyler said, were closed out. Somehow, the drawings ended up with the sidewalk on it again, that's what we had for our pre-construction meeting. But the city requires now that new permits be pulled and that codes be met. And the, the question is, as the plans are changing, what has been done? What has to be done? What protects the CDD to get the right work done on your infrastructure? And what protects the homeowners to make sure, when that water meter started leaking, I was on the homeowner's side of the water meter. They were originally told they had to pay for the water they washed, which was, at that day, 650 gallons. It was more than that ultimately, but, you know, we've got homeowners that are inconvenienced, your infrastructure's being messed around with, and the city is saying, they're the municipality, they wrote the codes, and the codes and permits have to be drawn and the codes have to be followed. So I'm requesting that this board direct the staff to make sure that you're on top of this, that's for all of us, to make sure this work is done correct. And I'm sure this isn't an isolated case, and this would apply to all of Gateway in dealing with Lennar. So I think this is a time to say, "Hey, you've gotta do it right, and we're gonna watch it in the future, just to make sure it's done right." I'm not accusing them of intentionally doing things wrong, but we have an obligation to make sure we do the right thing.
Am I missing something? As I drive, I've heard quite frequently, but I'm talking about now Pastoya. I've gone all the way down to the end of the cul-de-sac on Pastoya, and I don't recall sidewalk, on either side.
They're putting a sidewalk in there, it is in some sections, but as I understand it, they do not put sidewalks in until they've got the house built. And that's so construction trucks can get back and forth. The, the trash bins that they, they put on the lots, they can all destruct sidewalks. So when the, when the house is built, then they come back and put the sidewalks in. In this case, on Prado, they didn't put sidewalks in, and they were required to put them in.
I'm just worried about further complication with our cleanouts, our valves, our meter pits, and all of our assets. Are they gonna be entered the sidewalk in Pastoya, where we get the same problem again?
Very well could be, but again, and Tyler could probably assist me in this, because I'm, I'm a neophyte, a neophyte in this, but the fact that they didn't put the sidewalks in, in this location, required them to go back and do it.
This one's different.
After the houses are sold. And I think that's different. I think the general building permits that they pull and the land permits that they get, allow them to follow the process that they've done forever, that's build the house and then put the sidewalks in at the end.
Tyler, are you guys on that, or is staff handling this?
As far as inspection in this project?
Yeah.
We haven't managed to do anything on it yet.
What about the staff? So it's more, Joe, your, your direction is to staff? Because we haven't employed engineers to get involved?
I think, I think the CDD through the staff needs to probably work with Tyler and make sure that the right process is being done, the right permits have been pulled, and that the city is sending inspectors out to make sure that the work is being done right. When the water meters were moved, the construction company showed up, dug everything up, moved the meter and covered it up, all in one day. And nobody in the city knew that the work was being done, so it's obvious, that was not inspected. So you don't know if it was done to code or not. And obviously, with the leak that was developed, the construction wasn't done right. Now, I wouldn't say what's under the ground was wrong, but boy, if I wanted to be a smart guy, I could say the implication is, if they didn't hook up a meter right, what did they do in the ground that you don't get to see?
Our own little cover-up.
Kenny, are you aware?
That's what I was gonna say, Kenny, are you aware of this?
Kenny, you're aware? And Chris is aware? Okay. Well, Mr. Vice Chairman, if we could direct Mike to make sure that Chris maybe comes back to the board the next meeting with an update, just letting us know who's, who's gonna take point on this? Is it Tetra Tech? Is it staff and Tetra Tech? And what are we doing to make sure that permitting is happening and that we've got some, some visual oversight? Thanks, that would be pertinent.
As soon as we hear from our attorney, he'll do that.
I guess, just a question, from the standpoint of the process, I guess, with the approval. You know, the district staff handle it, engineer reviews the proposed plans and the sidewalk construction plan. Because all this work, as I understand it, is occurring in the district-owned right-of-way and also at district facilities to modify them. So typically, there's a right-of-way permit or license agreement when work is performed at a district facility. I'm just wondering if something like that has been...
I don't know the mechanism of how, of the mechanism of how it was permitted within Gateway, but it was done, it was over a year ago that we reviewed plans and approved this. So we can go back and check, but it's been, it took them a long time to actually get to the point where they started constructing it. So I can't speak for what the city has reviewed and issued permits for, but they, being the developers, did come to Gateway and get some sort of permit or license area or something to complete the work on that sidewalk.
Kenny, there's a license agreement, Kenny, or right-of-way, sorry.
Pardon? Yeah, Chris?
Do we not have to go and approve? Can you all utility manager? That would be on Chris's side.
Okay.
Chris is running for it.
I mean, I'm sure that the city would have to, I would imagine, inspect, but wouldn't we also be obligated to?
It's all gateway.
The only thing the city may want to inspect is that the sidewalk is there. They may not really care that much.
Well, I'm sorry, yeah, please. But we, there should be some type of sign, inspection, sign-on.
Annual bonding or some protection.
It's getting repaired and then getting buried over without any type of inspection procedure.
When I talk with the city code enforcement, their comment to me was, "The CDD is not municipality and does not write the city codes." And there was an implication that I just let go, but the fact is, the city doesn't know what's going on if they aren't informed by Lennar or the contractor. So work can be done, and nobody's aware of it, and nobody inspects it. The fact that Lennar was required to apply for codes within the city to build those houses, to fix those lots, and put that infrastructure in, they also, once that is closed out, are required to reapply for new permits, just like I would be if I wanted to do something on my house. So the fact is, if permits aren't, aren't requested, the city's not aware, the work gets done, it's not inspected by anybody, not by the city, not by Gateway, and Lennar just moves on. And the fact that this is now on property that's owned by, is privately owned, although this is the right-of-way for the street, and there are implications that allow that work to be done there, to me, I think that changes the way that the CDD has to be, review how this work is being done. Permits and inspections are required.
Thank you very much.
I apologize for taking so much time to everybody, I didn't think we'd get this far. Thank you.
Mike, you're the first supervisor of banks, I presume? You'll see that that happens, correct? Can you tell us through the next, the next...
We have two more. This, next up is Charles Shaper with the utilities rate hike.
Is this a $6 million dollar lien?
Charles?
Is this a $6 million?
Yes, it is. Now, you never did buy, did you?
I think I should have.
Yeah.
Yeah, give us your name and address again, please.
Charles Shaper, from Hampton Park. I don't know if the utility rate hike's been approved by the board or not, I know where the discussion has been, so tell me. Have they been approved?
No.
Okay. One thing I would like to, for you to consider is, if you do raise your rates there, that you eliminate the tier structure for the irrigation system, to be more in line with Lee County and Collier County. Both of them have a flat rate. There was no tier system at all. And the reason I say that, for the, I do have a large lot, and it takes me a lot of water to irrigate. And I brought my bill in from Gateway for May, and my bill was $292.90 total bill for water irrigation, everything. If I had lived, lived anywhere else in Lee County other than Gateway, my bill would have been $57 cheaper. And that's because of your tier structure you have on your irrigation system. They have a flat rate, 55 cents, no matter how many gallons you want to use. Here, you're in 25,000 gallons, and you start really pumping it up from 31 cents to a dollar something, to $2 something, for 1,000 gallon. So to make it more equitable for the people in Gateway who have larger lots, let's say, if you did away with that tier structure, you'd bring our costs down, even though your rates are gonna be going up, our costs will still come down.
Any questions?
There will be a public hearing. At the time, the rates are brought out, but I can almost assure you that, that tier structure won't get better, it will get worse. And the reason is, it's called conservation. We've gotta conserve the water. We don't have enough, or otherwise, we're gonna be spending a lot more money than we already are spending, getting more irrigation water. But there will be an adjustment and a change on the, the deal as far as the gallonages, I understand.
If I could ask another question. Does Gateway pay for its irrigation? An award that you guys use for your common areas, or do you get your award free?
Well, no, it's, well, it's free if you consider it coming up from the ground, but we have to add power and maintain pumps and all that other stuff to get it out of the ground. The water we get from the wastewater treatment plant, we've signed a contract with the county for 30 years, whatever.
Correct, 2033.
2033, that we have to take each and every drop of water that comes out of that plant. We have to use it, otherwise, we forfeit our rights on that, which is the last thing we want to have happen. So you could say we get it for free, but we spend, buku a lot of money on operation and maintenance and debt for getting the assets in place to be able to get the water from out here behind the building to your house.
Well, that's good to admit. But I know for years, you said that your claim to fame here was that utility rates here in Gateway were 50% or less than anywhere else in the county. That hasn't been true for years, and this proves it. The only thing that's gonna go up now, our rates are gonna go up higher. You're gonna increase those, and then at the end of the year, next year, you're gonna increase our taxes on top of that. I think, to be fair, everybody in Gateway, not just the commercial side, but the residential side also, keep you away with that tier system and go a flat rate, just like Lee County and Collier County does. That's the only fair way to do it. Because if I got a three-quarter inch line, meter, I'm allowed 25,000 gallons a month. If I was commercial side and had a one-inch meter, difference of a quarter inch, they're allowed to use 250,000 gallons, five times the amount I am, at the same price.
Ed, we gotta watch this. I know a little bit about this. That is not the base rate. They have a base rate that's probably 20 times.
I know what their base rate is. If I went to a one-inch line, it'd be cheaper for me to pay for a one-inch line base rate than it would to get the 250,000 gallons.
That depends upon the system.
I don't wanna get into an argument here with you.
I'm sorry, I have a lot to do.
Are you, are you finished?
Yes, I am.
I just, I just have one comment. I mean, it's Chris, right?
Charles.
Charles, Charles.
I mean, you, you've put in a lot of time on this effort, and it sounds like you've got some, some expertise in it. I think it would be a, a great next step, when we do have the public hearing and we've got our, the presentation to the board and to everyone else, for you to absolutely, you know, be able to look and see what the, what the recommendations are. And that will allow you to not only ask questions, but give a challenge, what's coming out of that study, before we go to approve anything. And that's the whole point of a public hearing, and I think we need to take advantage of residents that do have some expertise in challenging the status quo, so.
Don't be afraid to put in writing what you've just told us, so we can give it some due consideration.
All right. We can certainly pass that along to your consultants working through that, so he can, one, be able to address your concerns, but also be able to think through it.
Thank you, Charles.
Thank you.
All right, last one, James Brand, with a couple, couple different things.
Thank you for the time this afternoon. I am Jim Brand residing at 10154 Avalon Lake Circle, Hampton Park and Gateway. I apologize for a typo in my document that you had. In full disclosure to the audience and to you, I am a candidate for seat four of the board. At the meet, the candidates event on October 27th, Board of Supervisor incumbents for seat four and seat five made assertions about their accomplishments as board supervisors. After the meeting, Mr. Rod Senior, a past board supervisor, stated in writing to me that the accomplishments asserted by the two supervisors were fa, were false and were his work. I believe that the seat four and five supervisors owe Mr. Senior a public apology. I provided copies, copies of the information which corroborates Mr. Senior's claims. These are his written statements, as well as minutes and PowerPoint presentation of all the work he did when he was a supervisor. On October 3rd, information about the upcoming election and support for the incumbents for seat four and five was sent via email by the Gateway Soccer Association to the registered accounts of the association. The Gateway Soccer Association would not exist, except for the taxpayer's support of the soccer field, maintenance, repairs, lighting, et cetera. The association has a contract with the district. The Board of Supervisors set the fees for teams and for participants. I assert that the association is, is taxpayers-supported and must allow challengers to send a message to the association registered accounts similar to what the incumbents did. Copies of the association message is provided, as is the proposed message from the challengers.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ed, it's...
Question? Is it? Question for this. Tony, what is the legal situation of Gateway Soccer Association and its existence with us as a vendor, of doing this political advertising?
I don't know if I'd call it political advertising, I suppose. I'd call it political advocacy. As a vendor, I don't know of any rule or regulation that precludes them from engaging in advocacy for any particular candidate or gentleman.
So they, legally, they don't have any issue whatsoever, they can?
Well, the right part is to ask about the election law per se, is supervising elections or the division of elections, as to whether or not that organization needs to register or make disclosure. That's the election law issue, and that's not an area that I'm expert in. But from the perspective of, just from the perspective of a vendor, that standalone question, I'm not aware of them being included in engaging advocacy. From an election law perspective, I can't answer that question, whether or not they need to register or something else. So it's something, again, supervising elections or secretary is...
The, the other issue is, I'm assuming all, all the supervisors got a copy of this, the handout that Jim was referring to, the statement's name?
Yes.
Certainly like to have that, make sure that's in the record.
Yeah, and I'll just, I'll state that this statement and what's been put out is totally inaccurate, and I think it's disrespectful to try to push a political agenda in this forum. I think it's completely out of line, and personally, I wouldn't, I wouldn't stoop to that level, and I think I would not say anything negative about my candidate. I don't believe that she said anything negative about me. And I just, I'm very disappointed, Jim, to be honest.
Doug, it's not my comment, it's Rod Senior, sir.
Yeah, but you're using it as a, as a political tool. I mean, Rod can post what he wants, and, I mean, he resigned from this board over two and a half years ago, so.
And you were appointed, not elected.
That's enough, we're not going to the campaign meeting here today.
Thank you.
Well, I, I, I agree with the, what I sent through for candidate deals, and there's been some things said that are, let's say, stretching the truth.
I don't do your opinion, but this is not a campaign meeting. We're ready for staff reports. District Engineer, please.
Jeff, Nick, Dan. So again, Tyler Wayne-Radham with Tetra Tech, representing your district engineer. I do have four items on your bench today. So the first two are associated with what would be the next phase of lake bank improvements. So something that we've been talking about for several years now, the, if you recall, I guess, the quick summary was, last year, we bid a total of, I guess, seven lakes, and we moved forward with two of them, so that leaves five outstanding that are still designed if Gateway does choose to move forward with construction of those this year. So we were asked to put together a scope to do construction-based services for those five lakes, and that's what the first two are. There's, there's two separate tasks on there. One is for construction management, so that is to do things like review shop drawings, attend meetings, prepare record drawings, things like that. things like that. And the second one is for construction observation. That's actually the inspector that's out in the field. So they asked us to break those two out separately, so that's what they are.
Mike? Would you stay there, please?
Yes, sir.
This, this is the phase one, final seven ponds, construction, engineering-associated work.
Is it seven?
I think it's seven. Six or seven?
There's, there's, there's five. Phase one, part two.
Phase one, part two, yes, yes.
Yeah, so there was six phases.
Six ponds. But it's the construction services associated with the implementation of that work.
Yeah, so I guess, that question is, dating back several years now, there was, whatever you want to call it, phase one, phase two, phase three. And there was originally like 13, 15 and 13, somewhere around there. This is the end of that first phase one.
And we had previously given to us, I think in a meeting before last, that we had about 2.8 million, well, part left in that original $8 million loan and that the estimate of the work to do this last six was going to be under $2 million, which would have given us, in other words, we don't have to do anything in the way of any more borrowings or rate increases because we have the rate already set at the $8 million level. Are we still of the opinion or have we had a pre-bid estimate that would change anything on that? Because otherwise I'm ready to go full speed ahead.
I mean, I really can't speak to as far as what your rates have been set on.
They sound anything.
As far as the estimate, I mean, we have bids from last year. I would actually expect those bids to probably go down a little bit if they're available to bid, but not early enough this year. Because last year, one of the complications was, which we were really crushing on time, that was one of the reasons why we only did two instead of the whole eight, I guess. But, so I guess the answer to your question is, nothing's changed on that part. As far as the, what you have allocated and already, I really don't think I have an answer to that, but.
Have we been authorized, have you been authorized to advertise for bids?
No, certainly.
Does that not need to be the first step?
The bids need to be advertised for sure. As far as what you're going to advertise, in the past, Gateway has done it both in the Fort Myers News Press and online via a company called the Manstar. The bid documents are essentially unchanged from last year. I don't, I don't know if anything that they're made, so I think they're ready to go.
Let's, let's make it easy. Let's have Chris, since he's not here. Have him ready for the October 18th meeting with two documents for presentation. One, an advertisement for a bid plan for those six ponds. And then the second would be the approval of the engineering agreement to do the construction based services, which would be inclusive of bidding.
And I'll add to that, part of the reason for the stall, why we put these on hold is to, to continue to look for cost saves or a way to reduce the overall expenses because it's a pretty large sum. So I would just add, Ed, that we have Chris work with Tetra Tech to review the solution documents for any additional, you know, opportunities for cost saves or maybe there's some, some tweaks in the language where we can, you know, offer maybe some value engineering opportunities or something along those lines because we want to get cheaper.
Didn't these plans, we had done for eight ponds?
There'd been a revision.
And we had revised all eight ponds to the new lesser scope work. So I, I thought all that was behind us, the work done with that.
So a couple things there. If you recall, last time, there was, in this group of lakes, Gateway wanted to take two of them out, which were the bigger two. I forget the numbers, I'm sorry. The one in...